Mr. Konski, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden? Mr. Giuliano?
Here.
Mr. Nuss? Mrs. Ranzan?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mrs. Stahl?
Here.
Mrs. Witty? Mr. Giagostino?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Would you please join me in the flags? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Sussex wanted Regional School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the school building and notice of said meeting sent to the New Jersey Herald and the Star-Look.
The Sussex wanted Regional School District is a responsive, caring, child-centered community. Our mission is to educate each individual to become a competent, competent, lifelong learner and productive, responsible citizen by providing challenging opportunities in a safe environment through the partnerships of family, schools, and communities.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, everybody. Michael Goll, Superintendent. I want to thank you for joining us this evening. Basically, the function of tonight's meeting is to build upon prior meetings that we had concerning preparing for a reopening of schools. So in between our last meeting and this meeting, the state of New Jersey released the Road Back Restart and Recovery Plan for Education. It basically kind of provides a framework for us to develop our plan for now. As you can imagine, we've been thinking about this for a long time. But the purpose of tonight is to cover a few topics, not to present the plan that'll occur later in the month. So we'll talk a little bit about the future meeting dates. We'll review that NJ DOE framework for reopening. I apologize, I have a lot of content on the slides, and I wouldn't normally do that in a PowerPoint or a slideshow, but in the world of Google Meets and Zoom, I thought it was more beneficial in case somebody wants to go back and look at it, that it has a little bit more of an explanation than just bullet points. So we'll review that framework to kind of set a mindset so the community knows what we're looking at and the parameters we have to kind of operate under. We'll elicit some feedback from stakeholders, you know, in particular, at the end, you know, what else do you think we should be thinking about, you know, as we transition to the plan? We'll try to, you know, we learned a lot from the end of last year about remote learning and if we have to implement some of those strategies to agree, to a degree, we try to improve upon what we did, take what works, what didn't work. And then a little bit about what to expect next. So future meeting dates, we have the meeting tonight, and then Wednesday, the 15th, and Wednesday, the 22nd. And with each progressive meeting, we'll have more and more details to share with the community, with the goal being by the end of the month to get this plan out to folks. So the framework from the DOE basically has four key areas: conditions for learning, leadership and planning, policy and funding, continuity of learning. And if you've been following us in our previous meeting, we already have kind of committees put together that we feel are good fit for each of these areas, namely, for conditions of learning, kind of our facilities, our wellness folks, leadership and planning, our Board of Ed, our administration, a policy and funding, our budget committee folks, our policy committee folks, continuity of learning, our curriculum and instruction committee, and always, we want to engage the community. So just elaborate on conditions of learning a little bit. These are some of the parameters that the state is kind of putting in place. So we're not only focused on the physical safety needs of students, which I know is a paramount concern of everyone, but we also are required, which we would do anyway, to focus on emotional and environmental factors. You know, we anticipate that kids have been out so long, not interacting with friends to the degree that they would under normal circumstances, that's going to come with a host of challenges that the school will have to account for. Mrs. Wilson may be in a position to elaborate a little bit later on, she's been spearheading some of the wellness initiatives in the district. We will have to screen students and employees for symptoms of COVID, history of exposure, strive for social distancing in the classroom. I mean, you hear that every time you turn on the news, social distancing is critically important. If there are instances where you can't maintain that physical distance, the state's saying you have to try to mitigate that in some way, things like face masks, turning desks in the same direction. And our facility department has already, as you can imagine, been adopting cleaning protocols and disinfecting procedures, or custodial staff is in the middle of their summer cleaning process. So critical areas of operation under conditional, conditions of learning, again, general safety and health guidelines. So we have been and will continue to monitor the Center for Disease Control, state, local guidelines. We work very closely with a gentleman named Jim McDonald. And when I say "we," I just don't mean us, but the Sussex County Superintendents have meetings, you know, weekly, monthly, where the Department of Health joins us, and we're in constant collaboration with them. You know, they don't necessarily think with the mindset of a school official, so we're helping them, you know, see that perspective as they're helping us see their perspective. Things like providing accommodations for staff and students who may be at higher risk. Some of those accommodations may include things like things we're doing, like social distancing, hand washing, face coverings. Everything that we're going to talk about, in particular with the facility, safety guidelines, I kind of put under the perspective of it's COVID-19 presents a new dynamic for school security. You know, over the past decade, two decades, schools around the country have implemented a whole host of security procedures, and some of the things that you are hearing that you may need to put in place to make the environment safer for COVID-19 need to be balanced with those security measures. So anything that we do, you kind of have to look at it through the lens of a security mindset. And I know, you know, most folks know that our district's in a unique position, and we're fortunate to have security guards throughout the school year. So that's a plus, a check in that column for us, that they'll help facilitate most of that. Classroom testing, therapy rooms, schools and districts must allow social distancing. We talked about that, it's critically important. When it's impossible, those face coverings, staff, visitors mandated have to wear face coverings, minimize the use of shared objects, ensure indoor facilities have adequate ventilation, prepare and maintain hand sanitizing stations, ensure students wash hands frequently. So because we've been meeting as a board, as a district, as committees, you know, going back, I think it started in May, where we really had the larger group meetings, we had begun talking about all these things, and you saw very quickly that if you wanted things like hand sanitizer, PPE, you had to try to jump on some of that stuff, and we did do that. So we have to take possession of certain items that, things like adequate ventilation, you know, they're giving you options for air exchange rates, where you have to pull in fresh air. Now, I think the most of our classrooms have things called univens in them, in addition to windows that you can just open, but univens are designed to pull exterior air into the building. Transportation, so transportation is one of those areas that school districts anticipate to be a challenge. The parameter is, the guidance is that you have to try to socially distance to the maximum extent possible on the bus, if not face masks would be mandatory. Adopt best practices for cleaning, disinfecting, not just the school environment, but those transportation vehicles, buses. Student flow, entry, exit, common areas. So as much as we want to compare what we do in September to a traditional school year, in my view, that's not really a fair comparison. We're going to have to make significant changes to our, you know, physical logistics and things like that. So it may not, as much as we strive to, it may not look and feel like a regular school year, but if we compare it to the last three months of last year, that's kind of more an appropriate comparison, where we're trying to build upon that. So again, things like student and staff health screenings, physical guides, signage around the building, just helping reinforce the notion of, you know, try to keep that six feet apart distance. An area that's challenging, that we're, you know, brainstorming strategies around our arrivals and departures, because we, you know, assimilate kids to either get on buses or get picked up, or in reverse arrive. Screening, PPE, response to students and staff presenting symptoms. So the state is saying, you know, adopt a policy for safely and respectfully screening students and employees for symptoms and history of COVID. So not only do you have to do that safely, but you have to try to do it in somewhat of a confidential fashion. And anything that has to do with signs, symptoms, concerns about coronavirus, get reported to, and we collaborate with the Sussex County Department of Health on. Track, contact tracing, if you haven't followed it on the news, this is what, one of the things that the Health Department says is critical to their process on how to mitigate and reduce the spread of COVID and illnesses in general. And that's how they go about if you have someone test positive for it, any contagious disease, they initiate that process, and we would, of course, work with them in any capacity that we can. For example, you know, someone in a classroom, as unfortunate may be, gets exposure to coronavirus, we would have the information to the greatest degree possible about in the school setting, who they may have come in contact with. So they would spearhead that process, and we would follow their lead. So one of the things that we as superintendents, myself included, think that would be helpful for schools, school districts, parents, teachers, would be to have a understanding of the various scenarios that can happen in advance of them happening, so everybody knows what to expect. For example, scenarios like, you know, again, someone contracts positive for coronavirus, someone is presumed to have coronavirus, or someone has symptoms of, you know, they're consistent with the coronavirus, but are also consistent with the cold and other respiratory infections. How would they and us, how would we together collaborate to handle that? So what we've asked for as a county of the Sussex County Health Department is to develop kind of a scenario chart that we can publish in advance, so again, everybody knows what to expect and how we would handle those things. Now, there's always going to be scenarios that are unique, but if we can give, again, stakeholders an idea of the broad strokes, I personally think it would be helpful to have an understanding of that. We have to adopt increased routine cleaning and disinfecting, especially frequently touched surfaces and objects, sanitize bathrooms daily, between use as much as possible, but definitely daily. A lot of those things we already do as a district. One area that we are taking into consideration as we develop this plan are the options that we have from various vendors that we work with, for example, our transportation department, our food service providers. And in this case, we're just making stakeholders aware that we have certain restrictions, but we also have certain options when it comes to food service. You know, off the top, we need to discontinue family style, self-service buffet style, need to maintain social distancing, folks need to exercise proper hygiene. But our meals service provider has published this document, which basically, depending upon, they're basically saying, whatever we decide to do, they can accommodate us, whether it's meals in the cafeteria, meals in the classroom, some sort of split hybrid schedule, or continuation of virtual learning. And that's where we disseminate lunch, which we've been doing since late last year via Sussex Middle School. Recession physical education, so there's going to be certain areas that, you know, we're looking at based kind of departmentally, begin examining more thoroughly, you know, how can we implement recess? How can we implement physical education? Conduct walkthroughs of the interior and exterior spaces, just to identify concerns that we have, you know, it may come down to, we have to restrict this area, we can't participate in this area, provide an alternative for that. State document is recommending that you consider closing things like locker rooms, and in lieu of that, encouraging students to wear more comfortable clothing, safe footwear, to participate, obviously with social distancing in those environments without having the need to change. Extracurricular activities, use of facilities. If and when we offer those things, they must comply with all social, they have to comply with essentially the same things that we would have to comply with as a school. Make it aware of some other recommended elements, some key things that are important to not just the coronavirus circumstance, but in general in schools, social, emotional learning, school climate and culture. So those are, you know, opportunities to reengage students, support adults, rebuilding relationships, creating a foundation for academic learning. Mrs. Wilson, if you're on the line, I know she's been spearheading some wellness conversations. You want to elaborate on that in a little bit?
Sure, no problem.
Go ahead.
All right, so actually, our wellness committee had their first meeting on June 8th, and there's a lot of different aspects of what we have to, you know, look at. I mean, not just the physical wellness of our staff and students, but, and families, but also the social, emotional, because, you know, unfortunately, this is a very stressful time and anxiety-provoking time. And if we can't, if we don't address those aspects, then we're not going to be able to, you know, restart the academic process and, you know, make up for lost time and, you know, move forward. So, but, you know, part of the wellness, there's nurses on the committee, there's counselors on the committee, child study team on the committee. So we're trying to look at the whole, you know, the whole child, not just the academic piece, but, you know, the child as a whole. We're looking into different programs such as, there's one program that's called Rise, which is a really good example of how, you know, with the county mental health agency, there's like a grant-funded program where they come in and they do assessment of not just the student needs, but also the staff needs, and how to support, how we can support everyone, you know, through this crisis. And it's a free program, which is really awesome. We're also looking at improving how we do our risk assessments when students are in crisis. We're looking at, Rutgers University has a really, really good positive behavior support program, spearheaded by Dr. Maurice Elias. So we're possibly looking at maybe having him coming and doing professional development, and then, you know, working with our staff and students. We've also been looking, considering something called Responsive Classroom, which we do actually have elements of in the district now. And then there's another program called Conscious Classroom that we're also looking at. But again, it's about addressing, you know, not just the academic, but the whole social, emotional, and teaching our children how to self-regulate, and just being able to work through and develop positive coping strategies and problem-solving skills so that they, you know, are better able to learn. And then one program that one of our counselors was really excited about is called Project Wisdom, which is a Texas-based program, and it's very, very simple to implement. You know, it's all about using like positive quotes and affirmations. And so it's just something, you know, very small part of the day, but the impact is very, very large on the student body as a whole. Next week, I will be meeting with the nurses again, and I'll be meeting with the school counselors in small groups, and then I'll be meeting with the wellness committee as a whole on Wednesday so that we can, you know, start, I'm looking at how we can implement the pieces that are being mandated. You know, one thing as a district, we've always been, I think, very aware that, you know, children are, you know, that there are social, emotional needs, and, you know, we really, I do think, go out of our way to try and deal with the whole child and, you know, support our staff as well. So I think we have a great bunch of people on the committee, and I think we'll be able to do some really good things. So, thank you, Mr. Goll.
Thank you, Vicki. So this whole, this slide and the next slide is all about kind of encompassing the whole child. So the next area, multi-tiered systems of support. So, you know, kind of when I reflect on the entirety of the situation of coming back to school, I think, you know, priority one is everyone's safety, and followed by a photo finish, it's close, but the next part is instruction and helping kids move forward academically. So that's where these things kind of play a role, and how do we get those kids support? You know, you've missed, I think the state estimates that you missed a full year of instruction. So how do we compensate for that? And that, you know, doing initial assessments to kind of gauge where students are at, and how do you build upon that? And then MTSS kind of falls right in line with that. Wraparound supports, again, you're trying to address the whole child from behavioral perspectives, social, emotional needs. It's food, food service and distribution. The state has been adamant from the onset of this circumstance that, in particular, students who will participate in the free and reduced lunch program need the food access that the school can provide, if only for breakfast and lunch. And through the efforts of our BA, Mrs. Riker, I want to applaud, has really taken this initiative on as consistently, from the inception of it through this summer, continues to provide food service to those families who qualify and want to participate. So that, you know, remains a mainstay. Quality childcare, you know, we have an understanding of, you know, my mindset is to try to start cautiously, somewhat maybe slowly, as we develop that plan, that schedule. And it's not lost on us, my own family included, that you may have challenges with childcare when we talk about, you know, hybrid schedules and split schedules and things you'll hear on the news. So it's not lost on us that that may be a factor. So we will engage the various folks that we have in the area we work. You know, I'm not endorsing anyone by any means, but we work with a few childcare providers, one, our own in-house before and after care, and then a couple other companies in the immediate area who we facilitate those relationships with. We also anticipate putting out our plan by the end of the month, so at least you have a month as a parent to try to devise a strategy to respond to any dynamic that we may put out there. Leadership and planning, so one of the other things that each school district, each school should establish is something the state's calling a pandemic response team. That's kind of really focused on just the coronavirus-related decision-making, but it should encompass a diverse group of people who can look at it in different, through different lenses. So we already have in each school crisis management teams. They're composed of things like counselors and nurses and administrators, so we may have to add, you know, a parent perspective to that, but it's been advised that that's a possible group that we can just ask to participate in the pandemic response team. Again, they would be focused on COVID-19-related matters, communications, things like that. One liaison from that team should report to a district group. Again, it should include a cross-section of different demographics. We should work closely with them as a restart committee, and we do want to put out those plans at least four weeks before the start of school, and that's not only our goal, but the state has that initiative as well. This is a good segue, just to mention that, you know, we have a number of people who, as parents, I think BTO president, two is here, want to participate in some of our subcommittees where the actual, you know, more of the decision-making process, you try to iron out some of these nuanced concerns. We'd love to have you participate in those. So we'll send you out an invitation, and if you can make it, that would be great. And if not, you prefer just to participate in this, that would be great as well. Scheduling, so what the state has said is that districts reopening plans must account for resuming in-person instruction in some capacity. And they, I think they realize that every school district in the state is going to be unique, each school's going to be unique, you're going to have your own unique needs, your facility resources, your transportation resources. So, you know, the initial thought is our, my mindset is to kind of gradually phase into a full group. We're playing out a variety of scenarios, examining things like you may hear about an A and B schedule to try to reduce the number of students in the building. So just, you know, a little bit of an explanation about what that is, if you have no idea, be it, you divide your population into, say, two groups, one is an A group, one is a B group, and then an A group would go to school, say, Mondays and Wednesdays, a B group, Thursdays and Fridays and Thursdays, you'd alternate like that. So when you hear about those things, that's what we're referring to. Again, no decisions have been made yet. As the month progresses, we'll put out more details about those things as we engage you folks in the process. The governor has been very vocal about a couple different scenarios. One, you know, if you monitor news today, he, it appears as though he and his team constantly monitor, you know, the data that's coming out about coronavirus, not just in the tri-state area, but in the country. And he's constantly making adjustments today. I'd heard before I came over that face masks were going to be required, you know, outside as well as inside, I think as of today, and I think that comes with some nuances about group sizes and things like that, but he made that adjustment. So with respect to whatever plan we put in place, when he announced this plan, he said, you know, you're going to need to be prepared to go fully virtual if the need arises. And in that regard, we want to take into consideration, you know, our prior remote experience, and how can we best enhance that? You know, can we provide more PD to parents and families and teachers? Whole host of things that Mrs. Demalakis has kind of been taking the lead on as our curriculum coordinator. The other thing that the state has said is to be, you know, flexible, because we know that there'll be parents who, despite everyone's best efforts, just don't feel comfortable sending their children to school under these circumstances and providing them with the opportunity to do a full remote learning experience for those respective students and parents. So policy and funding, this is just kind of a brief discussion, just an overall about our, you know, more of our business and facilities areas. So we talked about before, you know, readying facilities, purchasing supplies, transporting and feeding students may look very different, at least at the onset of the transition back to school. You know, our goal would be to make it fully progress to a fully normal school setting. But at the inception, we think it'd probably look significantly different. Some things that we're considering, again, purchasing, you really had to try to be ahead of the curve on this, and, you know, to the administrator's credit and the board's credit, we're emphasizing these things, things like PPE. We've taken possession of, you know, significant numbers of things, cleaning supplies, expect another shipment in later this month. We're currently working to acquire some more specific PPE in areas that, you know, are kind of unique and may require them. As you can imagine, that those items, since the coronavirus were in demand, you know, I'm sure you saw on the news that there were shortages in that regard. I saw on the news yesterday, I think it was the, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry if I'm putting it wrong, but the mayor of Tucson, Arizona, where they're experiencing an increase in coronavirus hospital admissions, was saying that she only has two weeks left of PPE, and they were trying to acquire more. So we try to get ahead of that. Cost and contracts, this is just an area where the state was pointing out some ideas that the school districts should try to take advantage of, things like co-ops, New Jersey School Boards Association, different funding streams that Mrs. Riker, our business administrator, has always been on top of. Continuity of learning, I'm going to ask Mrs. Demalakis to kind of give an overview of this section, our director of curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Goll. Hello, I'm Haley Demalakis, and I'm the Director of Curriculum and the Vice Minister at the Sussex Middle School. So in continuity of learning, it's critical for our students to, I'm sorry, it's ensuring continuity of learning is ensuring continuity of learning is critical for our students at this time, especially during this time of great stress for families, educators and students. What we are focusing on is how we can better support families as well as they are a big part of this. The decree to which districts will be able to return to a traditional brick and mortar education still remains uncertain. And the Department of Ed anticipates that many students likely made less than a full year of academic growth during the past school year. So the move to a virtual learning environment, although our teachers, our students, our families all did an incredible job at adjusting. It was challenging. It created significant challenges for staff and students. Was that possibly within a full, less than a full year of academic growth? Can switch the slide? Thank you. So some of the key elements are ensuring the delivery of special education and related services to students with disabilities. In doing this in the greatest extent possible. So the curriculum committee, Mrs. Vicki Wilson, who is the Director of Special Services, she's heavily involved in that. And as a community, we will work to ensure that special education services in our vulnerable population are educated effectively. Technology connectivity, we're continuing to audit and address technology concerns as well as ensure that all students have access to devices. Shall we go in that direction? Curriculum instruction and assessments. So in planning curriculum instruction assessment for reopening, instruction in hybrid environments, as well as preparing teachers and staff to address any learning gaps that might prevent students from moving grade level standards on the NJIS. You could continue. And then also providing professional development for staff and parents. It's imperative that we provide professional learning opportunities that will better equip leaders, staff, substitute students and parents and caregivers to adapt to altered educational environments and experiences. Keeping in mind the most vulnerable population and also preparing and supporting educators in meeting the social, emotional health and academic needs of our students. So we do have a committee of roughly 25 teachers, child 30 team members, administrators, Board of Education members, administrative assistants, who have met together, the full group, twice so far, and will continue meeting in the future. We have discussed for our next meeting, creating building-based subcommittees, so smaller groups. Some of the specific discussions are very building specific. Some of the things we have discussed and I hope plan to discuss in the future to create this plan are scheduling options with the goal of ultimately having all students return. So Mr. Goll is discussing the A/B options, the hybrid options. While discussing the schedule, we're also discussing hybrid approaches to instruction for education for the access both virtually and in person. We're working with the IT department to monitor technology tools and utilization of those tools. As a committee, I, we haven't reached this discussion yet, but I would like to work as a committee to develop some PD options for technology development and comfort using technology tools for both parents and for teachers. And also, we're working with the IT department to discuss virtual and in-person assessments.
Thank you, Mrs. Demilakis. So I know there's probably a whole host of questions and things like that, little nuts and bolts questions that stakeholders have across the board. And again, kind of the intent of tonight was to give you the overview of the framework that the state put in place that we have to think about as we plan and build upon the ideas that we had already had. So one of the things that would be most helpful, I think, to this committee was that anything else you think as a stakeholder, be a parent, a teacher, things that we should be thinking about and take back to those subgroups to iron out some of those answers would be appreciated if you shared. I'm going to start with the email chain that we have, just some comments and questions. The first of which is from a Cassandra, man, I don't know if she's on the line tonight. I suspect from the content of this question that she may not realize that this email stream is, the questions are being, you know, discussed in a public forum in the board meeting. So we're going to follow up with her in particular. It's about the personalized funding stream question that she has. Next up, I have Mrs. D. How you doing, Mrs. D? She's read the recommendations by Governor Murphy for reopening and is concerned about mandating masks for staff but not students. She feels masks should be mandatory for all, leaving that open is a slippery slope. And is asking about options for continuing online learning of a parent, so chooses not to send their child to school. We had kind of touched on that, that there would be. What she's referring to in the governor's documents is that they use language like mandates, masks are mandated for staff, visitors, with exception to folks who wearing a mask would negatively impact some sort of medical condition that they have. And they use words like strongly encourage when referring to students wearing masks. And they note that they think that it's probably unreasonable in certain circumstances to try to maintain a mask on, say, a preschool student, kindergarten student. So as a district, we haven't made a determination about what we'll require. But, you know, again, this, we're going to have to be flexible in our approach in the sense that we may need to modify things like Governor Murphy did today. When, you know, now he's apparently, according to what I saw on the news, is requiring masks for outdoor functions within certain parameters, again. Another question, the person doesn't identify themselves as a name. It's from Diane, but no last name. Will there be, will there still be limited absence allowed? Can face shields be used? So absences, I mean, the state at the onset of this circumstance, the guidance was kind of be flexible with attendance. Because they, I think, understood that there's a whole host of dynamics at play. And this was before, really, I think schools had to close. I don't anticipate they would change, but we'd still be bound by, you know, I would think the attendance guidelines by the state of New Jersey. But that would encompass, you know, in-person and remote instruction. I'm not a medical expert by any means. Every time I turn on the news, somebody who's not a doctor says, starts the statement by saying, I'm not a doctor, but this is what I've heard. So with respect to face shields, what I've read, what I've seen on the news seems to indicate to me that face shields without a mask on aren't as appropriate as a protection as with no mask on. And the characterization I had heard was that the, you know, without the mask, the vapors and the moisture droplets from one's mouth can emanate outside of the plastic shield.
Can I just ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
There are people out there that want to make a comment. How would they do so? I just got a message from someone who would like to make a comment, but I'm not sure how.
Well, as soon as I'm done reading the email responses, you can either email or if you're on this, you can speak. Once we open the floor, you can unmute yourself, but if not, Mr. Krosky, you want to say the email address that people can use?
It's boe2020@swregional.org. And again, and some of the questions show up in the chat as well, but I see that this question duplicated. The next question is duplicated.
All right.
Or they could send them to boe2020@swregional.org.
So I'm just going to continue with this email chain and then transition to the other. Another question from Ms. Militek, for planning purposes, does the district have a few schedules that the district feels are optimal for September? If so, what are they? So again, we haven't finalized those decisions, but as this month progresses, we will put that out sooner rather than later. So two reasons. One, you know, if we switch to something like an A/B schedule where we divide the groups, there's a lot of work that would need to go into place to create those groups. And two, to try to give parents as much timing, planning time as possible. But the current thought is some sort of hybrid schedule. The different scenarios that you're looking at are A, you know, A/B, AA. Trying, you know, we're deciphering whether or not it's better to keep kids together or it's better to have the frequency of seeing them multiple times a week. But again, the overall mindset that I can give you concretely is at this juncture is to try to start off slow. Mrs. Trushheim has a question, two questions. Will you be surveying parents? Yes. So prior to, you may have heard in the other meetings that we had, if you were participating or viewing, that we had developed this survey and I was kind of waiting for the state guidelines to come out to reflect on, you know, what their mindset was for the framework. And now we're just kind of fine tuning that survey and would disseminate it probably by early next week. Will you offer virtual instruction for students with underlying health issues? We kind of covered that, that the state framework accounts for that flexibility. This is Stefanelli has a question. How does the new guidance on groups of 250 people and protesters being okay impact what schools need to do? For properties and transportation. So I don't, you know, I can't obviously get in the governor's mindset. At this juncture, what they said is they've given you this framework. So again, in my mindset, I think starting off slowly to reduce those numbers is probably advantageous to us for a whole host of reasons. You know, one of them being logistics of managing the flow of traffic, managing the flow of kids and weaning ourselves onto that process. I would suspect that as time goes on, they would put a new criteria out for what those group sizes could be. I think she's referring to Mrs. Stefanelli, if you're out there. You know, you're saying you can have, you know, protesters, I guess, in this large capacity, but how can you have, you know, say that you can't have that number in school? I think that's what she's pointing to. And that's what I would say. I would suspect the governor would come out with modification to that. Just before I transition to those questions, just to bring up the next slide, before I exit out of the presentation, just so everybody knows what to expect next. Again, additional opportunities for those folks who want to, to participate in those subcommittees where you're trying to iron out some of these questions. Again, survey of stakeholder perceptions, I had that in there, Mrs. Stefanelli. More details with progressive meeting, older notifications going out about that. And our plan again is anticipated to come out before the end of the month, just to try to give everyone as much time as we can, under some tight time constraints. So folks at home can make those adjustments. Chat, I see Mrs. Trushheim's question about surveying parents, which we had covered. I don't, just want to open it up to, you know, any of the stakeholders in the audience. You would have to click the mute button on your screen, the microphone button. And if you want to pose a question to the group or give some idea again about what else we should be thinking about.
Hit the stop presenting button, Mike. Mrs. Riker, you're going to have to unmute your thing, Mrs. Riker.
Shoot, I put out my camera. See, the technology is rough for me. If anybody wishes to make a comment or pose any suggestions, if you could please state your name before doing so, because with this whole group, it's very hard for me to manage that process. Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments, questions, concerns, any stakeholders?
I have a comment question. Hi, Josh Wagner here. Thank you, Mr. Goll. Thank you, board members for this. And it looks like you've already put a lot of thought into, obviously, the possibilities of what an A/B or hybrid system would look like. And is it in your mind to possibly do in-person and virtual simultaneously? So it's almost like the teacher's broadcasting or simulcasting. So the A-
I think I have a strong understanding of what you're commenting on, and that's something we're currently trying to plan the most streamlined approach for. There's a lot of nuances with that. With, you know, things like privacy of other students in a classroom. So we're trying to develop the best strategies to make the in-person and remote experience as seamless as possible.
Right. And I guess the other considerations of, you know, where the teachers don't have to do multiple lessons or the same lessons, you know, multiple times. You know, teaching A for two days and then teaching the same lesson two more days in a week.
Yeah, that's great feedback, Mr. Wagner. Thank you for that.
That was it. And a comment for, you know, representing the PTO, if there's anything that we can do to help in this process.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments, questions?
Yes, Nick, I do.
Yes, Mrs. Fields.
Yeah. Have you guys considered putting partitions on the desk, like a plastic partition on each student's desk? So if you were to put them in a group like they were in the past, that the shield would protect them so they're not actually exposed face to face, they would have that partition? You know, like they have in the stores for the cashiers?
Yeah. So a couple of the things that you're auditing at officials right now as you're going through this planning process is the configuration of various classroom settings. Now, there's a different response depending upon what the structure, the furniture in the classroom is. For example, you have classrooms with desks. And all those desks, the state advises, you can have them facing one direction, decreasing the collaboration between students. In other scenarios, you might have tables in classrooms because over the past decade, two decades, as instructional strategies, we've tried to facilitate more collaboration and discussion between students. So this is one of those things that you're going to have to have a contrary approach to that. Within that regard, things like dividers are currently being examined. You know, reducing the number of students in classrooms is being examined as a strategy, like we said with the A/B schedule. Plexiglas, as you can imagine, just like PPE was, becomes harder and harder to come by as the entire United States wants to have access to that kind of product. So it is something that's being considered.
Okay, thanks. And I do have another question. For when you bring the children back and you're doing that A/B scenario, my concern would be for the younger children, because especially those just starting out in kindergarten and first grade to get into that routine and learning. And I know it's a whole new world, but I think that focus really has to be on those kids. Because I, I'm just thinking my own children or grandchildren, you know, to have them go to school for two days and then they're going to be like, oh, and I don't have to go to school for three days. They're going to think that's a norm and I think it has to be harder for them to adjust.
Yeah. I mean, it's an excellent point and it's something you have to take into consideration. One of the concerns that you're kind of weighing in your mind is not only do we want to have school open successfully and safely, right, for everybody, but we want to have it stay open. And, you know, my thought on being gradual about the process and taking it more cautious might help facilitate that over a longer term, just my take on it. But the various committees, you know, as you can imagine, But the various committees, you know, as you can imagine, that's why we engage the diverse perspectives.
Okay, then, I'm sorry, I do have a lot of questions.
I forgot, I forgot what it was like, Mrs. Field.
You know, with the, like, when you bring the students in, are you considering bringing them in like only one or two doors? And will they have their, of course, they should have their temperature taken. But if you, if you filter them in one door or two and then don't let them go in how many you have available, that'll cut down quite a bit and then you have them exit out the same way.
So again, another good nuts and bolts question of the specific, you know, logistics of the operation and that is probably one of the things that is somewhat at odds with, you know, the traditional ideas about our security procedures. Not to go on, you know, in detail about them, but as you know, for the most part, you come to report to the school, you gotta report to the front main entrance. You get, you know, what's your business here, you get buzzed in. So, under that dynamic, under the new dynamic rather coronavirus, one of the other things you're trying to balance that with is, to the greatest degree possible, trying to isolate cohorts of students so that they don't intermingle. So the degree that we can do that, you know, is currently being assessed. You know, you, you might open a wing up so that just that, you know, whatever, group of second graders can go in through that way. So we know that that's kind of isolated the second graders. Again, one of the fortunate aspects that we have for the district, that the board, you know, before I came on board, really had the vision to adopt, where in my opinion, the assets and the security guards who can help facilitate that process.
Okay. All right.
This is Kathy.
We're gonna come back to you at the end, Mrs. Field.
Okay, thanks.
All right, go ahead, Mrs. Fields, yes.
Okay, so, you know, I've heard you talk a lot about all of these reopening committees. What, do you have any parent involvement or is it just staff? And nurses?
So I would say-
My thing is I think parents should be involved, you know, to give their side also, along with your staff and nurses and-
Yeah. So certainly, I mean, so that's kind of the, the reason we have, I would say, only half a dozen to eight parents currently participating in this meeting. We certainly welcome more parents to participate. And then if you would like to participate in those subcommittees where you have, you know, the, those nuts and bolts questions are being ironed out, that would be a venue for you if you want to participate in that, that we'd love to have you.
Okay, so how do I go about that?
You know, we're gonna send an email to the folks who are on here, but it'll be part of a survey question where you can enter your name.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I see Mr. Craig, Mr. Kevin Craig has some thoughts. I had the opportunity and as well as Mr. Gall to attend a seminar that his security company did yesterday and it was very informative. So, Mr. Craig, thank you for being here and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Thanks, Mr. Giacchino, thanks, Mr. Gall. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. A couple of things that I just want to throw out for consideration for your, for your committees and your subcommittees. In addition to surveying your, the community, it may be worthwhile to survey your staff as well to try to get an idea of staff members that may have concerns about returning or have, well, in a high-risk category or have special needs to determine, you know, to drive your, your policy development for how, you know, who's gonna qualify for any accommodations for, for returning or not returning or remote work or anything like that. And clearly those policies, you know, should be developed with the, with the assistance of your, of your legal team.
Just to clarify my point, I mean, generally anytime we do survey stakeholders, they're encompassed, you know, the survey, we did a survey earlier when remote learning was still happening and there was kind of a separate one then, just because there were some questions that were more specific to faculty and staff. So we do have every intention of doing that.
Sure, and, you know, again, because I think, I think staffing, you know, as you mentioned, Mr. Gall, you know, you, some of the increased mitigation measures using multiple entrances, having, you know, security staff or others do mitigation compliance to make sure everyone's abiding by the rules, visitor management, access control, those things are all gonna require, you know, probably-
I'm sorry to interject again, maybe, Mr. Craig, for the audience who don't know you, maybe you can just give a little bit about your background so they understand where the point of perspective you're speaking from.
Sure, so my name is Kevin Craig, I'm from, from Wantage. I've had students in Sussex Wantage and High Point School Districts for over 20 years now consecutively. So I've been an active community member in this district and in High Point as well. My background is in, primarily in law enforcement. I was in law enforcement for 25 years. I was retired as the chief of police at Jefferson Township. I was, after I retired from Jefferson Township, I was the safety and security director at High Point Regional High School for five years. I now work for a private consulting firm that works on school safety and security with a multitude of both public and non-public schools. Working with, currently with, with a number of schools, develop reopening plans and assist them with a lot of the challenges that, that we're seeing in Sussex Wantage and statewide. One of the things that, you know, that has driven me to this, you know, into this field was when I was the chief of police, I was a member of the New Jersey School Security Task Force appointed by the governor. So I have a passion for school safety and security and I just like to get involved in the community and assist in any way I can. So that's basically what, what my background is and that's where recommendations are coming from as far as things that, that should be, you know, may, you know, may be considered by your committees and, and subcommittee. So all of these mitigation measures are obviously gonna require adjustments to staffing. And if you have reductions in staffing because you have staff that are, that are high-risk and are able to participate as they were before, that could impact the need for additional staff, additional subs, additional paras, aides and things like that, both in, in the building and in, outside of the building and as well as in transportation. Transportation is also a significant issue for, for most schools. We have a unique situation where we share busing with, with another district as well. Rescalding buses and adding bus stops and things like that could be a cumbersome process. So I know, and I'm sure that, you know, that, that's something that's gonna be closely considered. One of the things that I think is important when it comes to the transportation piece, particularly because there's a lot of oversight that has to be undertaken. Bus drivers have a very difficult job as it is driving a bus, you know, 40 to 50, you know, young, young people on it have, are full of energy. So, so to put on them an additional responsibility of having to manage COVID compliance, like social distancing and mask wearing and things like that while, while they're trying to drive a bus, could be, you know, could be a significant issue. So considering having an aide on, having someone, another adult on the bus to kind of take care of those mitigation issues might be something to consider. Obviously, that's an additional expense and it's an additional employee. But I think with the hyper vigilance that's, you know, that's placed on, you know, bus and transportation safety, and rightfully so, I think the less our bus drivers have to do besides just drive the bus and get our kids to school safe is probably a worthwhile consideration in addition to, you know, the other things that, that you're considering as far as, as far as mitigation. And, and Nick and Mike, as, as you heard on the, on the webinar yesterday, again, my focus is on, is on the physical aspects. I'm not, I'm not a, you know, public health person. I leave that up to the public health people. But certainly balancing your, your COVID mitigation measures with your security is, is important, making sure you're maintaining that access control. And some of the things that you're gonna be dealing with, like using multiple entrances are gonna require, again, additional supervision, maybe additional security staff or at least additional adult supervision in the building. If masks are going to be required by students, certainly another way to potentially identify them, having them wear name tags or IDs so you don't have to have students remove their masks to be able to identify, you know, who they are. Certainly having all staff members, if they're not already, wearing, wearing IDs so adults in the building are visible and easily identifiable when they're wearing masks. And just balancing the security measures that you already have in place with those, you know, with those COVID that, that may kind of impact your, your daily security measures.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. We have a question from Ms. Wicks.
Yes, so Ms. Wicks asks if students will be arriving at scheduled different times to make it easier for students to be checked in when they get into the building, et cetera. So, as you can imagine, there's a variety of strategies when the state gives the flexibility that they have. There's a variety of strategies that are being discussed, at least within Sussex County, that I meet with the various superintendents. And some school districts, in particular, in my opinion, who might be a little smaller, might be walking districts, are, are thinking of different things that might work better for them. To some degree, our bus arrivals are staggered in the sense that they get to different, the different, three different schools at different times. And, you know, again, starting off gradually, if that's the approach we finalize, you're reducing the number of students potentially in half. So that, that, that would be where that comes into play. I got a couple of other questions. Mrs. Sparta, an email chain, Mrs. Sparta, if you're out there, hello. I've been meaning to touch base with you via phone. I feel like gotten emails that I sent, maybe they're in your spam folder, but I do want to touch base with you about participating here. She asked, has, has grade level learning objectives changed due to remote learning? So, to, to my knowledge, the New Jersey State learning standards have not changed. I don't anticipate them changing, that's still what teachers have to, to keep in mind when they're teaching. But, I mean, as you can imagine, there's a great, there's going to be a great amount of latitude as there was in remote learning too. You know, teachers have traditional latitude in their classrooms about how they meet those learning objectives. And, you know, I think everybody's kind of operating of their mindset of this new, you know, coronavirus dynamic, but they have not changed. Another question, Alexis Still, she's questioning, she'd like to see the plan. She proceeds that another district, Newton, has their plans out and wants to give teachers and parents ample time to prepare. So that's our goal, one in the same, as actually the state's goal as well. Again, they want to, within four weeks, I'd like to have it out by the end of the month to give everybody that opportunity to plan. I meet with the county superintendents, you know, virtually weekly, you know, regional superintendents, meeting our sending districts to High Point, scheduled a meeting. I'm not, I'm not personally aware of any district's plan being published. I know Dr. Green put out a letter about surveys and collaboration, but I'm personally not aware of any plan being published just yet. Mrs. Ogrins, how you doing, Mrs. Ogrins? She just wants to, my comments to thank all of you for taking on this huge burden with so much thoughtfulness, common sense and care for the students and community. She's sending her gratitude and best wishes for all your good health. And if you're still watching, Mrs. Ogrins, on behalf of everyone you send, Mrs. Ogrins periodically sends emails, basically, you know, giving us words of encouragement and things like that. I know I speak for all the staff, you do that too, we really appreciate that. And we appreciate everything the parents have been doing and the community members have been doing. It's just been, it's, it's really challenging circumstances, but coming together, no, there's nothing we can't accomplish. This Cassie Janks, how you doing, Mrs. Janks? Do you have a timeframe for a plan? Yeah, again, as these next two or three meetings throughout the month, we'll release more concrete, specific details, but by the end of the month, that plan will be published for folks. Again, so you have a month lead time to try to make whatever preparations you can. And again, it isn't lost on me or it's not lost on the Board of Education that my own family, I, I understand, will be impacted by what decisions they make. You know, I have, I work in Sussex Wantage, my wife works in another district in the county and my kids attend, yeah, another, a third district in the county. And we'll all have different plans and I know that that's gonna be extraordinarily challenging for us. So it's not lost on me that it'll be challenging for folks here and we're gonna try to get through it together, support as best we can. And again, the goal is not just to open schools safely, but to keep them open. Because the last thing we'd want to do is open schools and then, you know, you have some unfortunate circumstance and you have to close down right away and that would just negatively impact, you know, everybody at large. So that's something we're gonna try to avoid. Also, if I didn't point it out already, coordination to the degree that we can, you've heard me talk about collaborating with the county, but our region, I, I've always enjoyed a great relationship with our region and the, the superintendents who work there. We have a meeting set for early next week. In addition to discussions we have already had, just again, to the degree that we can try to collaborate, you know, as you can imagine, high schools, I don't speak for any of the high schools, but they're gonna have, you know, significantly different needs and perspectives than an elementary school might have with, you know, kindergarten, first grade students. So we're, we're striving to work together and collaborate to the best degree that we can.
Mr. Gall, I have a parent who is having some computer issues. So if I could kind of jump in here, it's Sandy Fet. And her question is, how are you going to handle behavior issues? If kids think that it's funny to take their own masks off or to take other people's masks off, how are you gonna handle that? And maybe she was just thinking that maybe putting something together to be sent home to the parents prior to the school year so that kids know what will be allowed and won't, won't be allowed. She also would like to thank all the teachers. They were absolutely amusing and talking to other people. They were above and beyond and they were so caring and it is so great that the kids and well as the parents. And so she wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Fet. So, yeah, I, I think there, that's a great idea. You know, the more communication we put out about the more specific details and helping parents prepare their children for what to expect is critically important. And, and following up on that in the school level, you know, discipline's an interesting area as a school official. You know, not just for coronavirus and masks or whatever parameter they, they're required to follow, but, you know, for age dynamics, when you're dealing with kids in the large school and, you know, you're dealing with kids in the middle school, that's a, that's a different spectrum, there's a whole spectrum there of approaches. So, you know, everything, every strategy you employ ranges from things like helping them understand what's happening and why it's important for you to, in this question, wear a mask, all the way up to someone, you know, who might have to have parents engaged in the process in a more concrete, kind of disciplinary learning outcome because they're flagrantly, you know, violating. But, you know, working with parents and the student to collaborate on, you know, whatever parameters we put in place that you have to follow would be the most meaningful and giving them that, that foresight in advance, I think would not only help parents instill that in students, but also looking at the different parameters, whether or not they feel comfortable sending their child to school. I have another one in an email. Communication, Mrs. Millicic, again, thank you. And she just appreciates conducting this meeting, letting the community be heard. She has kind of a follow-up question to the A and B schedule. Again, that's something we're brainstorming. So she's pointing out that, you know, basically, if you have an A and B schedule, if you divide those groups, could you do it in capacity where you bring everyone in potentially? But, you know, the A group is in class and the B group might be somewhere else in the building. And that's kind of where I was getting to, where some districts, who, in my opinion, are generally smaller and generally don't have some of the transportation restrictions that we may have. You know, we operate over 37 bus routes, I think it's 30, 38 and, you know, several vans to restrict those group sizes where you can't socially distance and kind of, you know, wean us onto the approach. So it's, there's definitely something we're looking at, but you're kind of limited to some degree by the logistics of your building. You know, I know one district kind of brainstorming something like that, but their building, for example, is a one school district and their building was originally designed as a high school. And they have multiple kind of auditorium and gymnasium spaces more than a typical elementary school would have. And they're brainstorming something like that because they feel like they can have that. I don't know if we're in the same place as them. But it's a great thought and, you know, I'd encourage you to, to, you know, participate in one of those committee meetings, subcommittee meetings because, you know, I personally know the insight that you have and the qualifications that you had. So we'd love to have you. Mrs. Wicks got another question in chat. One more question from me, what will the protocol be if a child is sent home sick? We know that it normally has to be fever-free for 24 hours, 24 hours returning to school. Will the same rules apply? Will the student need to be out for a longer period of time? So, we currently have our nurses brainstorming those things. So, we currently have our nurses brainstorming those things with, in conjunction with a couple of different things. So, school districts will have to adopt policies on a whole host of different things. So, New Jersey school boards, there's two main policy providers in New Jersey, one's Strauss Sessmeh, one's New Jersey School Boards. We use New Jersey School Boards for certain things, we have access to certain things that they have, but Strauss Sessmeh is really our policy provider. That being said, New Jersey School Boards came out with some policy amendments that they're recommending today, that we just started looking at, that cover a whole host of these questions that you folks have been asking. The other dynamic that'll play here is when I talked about what the county superintendents have asked for in collaboration with the Department of Health. And there, Jim McDonald, who's the director over there, is actively working with his people and the state, you know. Sometimes the county has questions that they need to wait for the state to respond to them for. So, there's a bunch of that kind of stuff going on. But if we can provide all stakeholders with the sheet of scenarios of what to expect when, you know, a student has a fever in school, or a, you know, child suspected of being exposed to someone at home who has coronavirus, what are all those nuances that the Board of Health will be looking to do and put in place, we'd like to have in advance? The other thing that we are going to really, really stress for folks, in an ideal world, I know kids can develop illness while at school, but that pre-screening that occurs at home before your child leaves is going to be one of the better defenses of, you know, you can't send your child to school sick. And that would be one of the most helpful things that a parent or guardian can do to help prevent illness, not just coronavirus from being spread in school, and that's something we kind of endorse all the time. Another email question from KC, oh, Kelly Clark, how you doing, Miss Clark? She's pointing out a concern that we should look at about bathrooms, shared bathrooms at Wes, CEO, ways. You know, as you can imagine, they're very active communal bathrooms. She goes on to express some specific concerns about our own children that I'm not going to comment on. Yeah, so, so those ideas are specific to kind of our facilities area and subcommittees about how do you do that? You know, at Lawrence School, bathrooms have always been a challenge at Wanted School, just to shed some light on this. When you're at the Lawrence School, you know, virtually a bathroom in every classroom. When the kids came up to third grade in the Wanted School, if you don't know, it's more of a communal bathroom. Well, there's several bathrooms, but they're designed to have multiple students in them at once. And that's always been an area where we had to teach kids how to conduct themselves in a communal bathroom, as you can imagine, because they weren't really exposed to that before, unless they were exposed to it in their private life. So, that's an area that we're working on, you know, certainly routine cleaning every night of those environments. The good hygiene practices is something that we're going to have to instill in students, signage is appropriate. And, you know, all those kinds of types of strategies. So, Cunningham asks another question, specific for Sussex Middle School. She's asking a very specific question, I don't know if you're on the line, about her child. And she goes on to mention a circumstance that I'm not going to share with the public about the child, so we'll reach out to her directly.
Thank you, Mr. Gall. Are there any other email comments at this time?
The only other question I have, it just popped up in email chain from Ms. Orsi. Will school nurses have access to COVID-19 testing to test students who are ill with parental permission? To my knowledge, there is no no discussion of anything like that coming out of the state of New Jersey.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gall. Does anyone have any other questions, comments, anybody on the meeting?
Nick, if I could just have a minute?
Of course.
In everything that was said tonight, I think it's really important that we realize, and I want the public to know, that we're thinking about every situation as it falls. When we talk about the buses, when we talk about how to get the kids on the buses, when we talk about parental health and compliance, all of that's going to have to factor into all the things that we do when it comes down to fulfilling the job that we're responsible for. You know, we don't want to have a situation where a bus driver pulls up and, you know, little Johnny's not wearing a mask, and we have a bus driver trying to figure out how to get 45 other kids to school while watching, while dealing with little Johnny in the driveway. So, I think it's important that everybody knows that we're breaking down every single situation possible to make it the best we can for all the students and the staff and the administrators involved.
Thank you, Mrs. Craig. We just had one of our all-star nurses, Tim Flynn, answer Ms. Wick's question. She says, the new protocol will be 72 hours fever-free, without any fever-reducing meds. That's the new protocol.
Yeah, and just to elaborate that on further, in my conversations with Mr. McDonald, it's going to be, that's going to be contingent upon what the circumstances are. You know, general fever for, you know, flu-like illness called versus coronavirus, where, you know, Department of Health may quarantine you for 10 to 14 days.
Of course. All right, are there any other questions, comments, Mr. Gall?
Just another comment, just to follow up from Ms. Orsi, thank you so much. She just wanted to say thank you for all the public live streams, especially Michael Gall for putting together one of the presentation. I, in any way, to say that. It's been enlightening for her, the transparency and complexity of all the issues that must be considered, what a difficult time this is for my school, for our schools, thank you for stepping up and doing this. The other thing I want to point out is that this is by no means the Mike Gall Show. There's a, you know, everybody on this call is engaging in the process. I'm by no means, you know, anybody that they have an expertise in school preparedness for coronavirus is kidding themselves. I mean, it's just, it's unheard of. So, everybody from our administration to our instructional staff, to our parents, all our other stakeholders and community members, you know, the district can't, you know, function without you folks, can't move forward without you folks. So, coming together, even if you have a comment that's an area of growth for us, that is appreciated, because we need to work through those challenges. And again, if you folks who are on the call tonight, or anybody else who ends up watching, is like to participate in those subcommittees, we'd love to have you. A follow-up comment from Mrs. Trushheim is just thanking you all for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Gall, and thank you for all these comments. Are there any other comments or questions from members of the public, via email, via chat, anybody in the group? Make sure you unmute yourself if you do have a question, as you are automatically muted, I believe, on Google Meet. All right, anything else from you, Mr. Gall, on your end?
No, again, I'd like to thank everybody, our follow-up next week, in between then and now, you know, again, we'd love to have you participate. So, if you want to participate in the process, if you can, if you can make some and you can't make all, that's still appreciated. If you have, you know, you can't participate, and you want to send us some follow-up comments or suggestions that we should look at, we're more than happy to look at those in emails, and I can forward them to the group. You know, we want to engage you in the process to the greatest degree possible. And we know it's going to come without challenges, but again, together, we're going to get through it.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Gall, and I, too, would just like to thank everyone on the call, everyone watching.
One last, one last comment. From Ms. Cart, again, with distance learning, will children make up work at home for sickness or snow days without accounting as absent? So, I think she's referring to, like, for example, if you had to close for a snow day, could you do remote learning and have that count? Now, I don't think that there's been a definitive answer about that in a meeting I had in today. There was some discussion about the possibility that something like that, maybe, there may be flexibility for that, but I'd be hesitant to say, hesitant to say that's finalized. The part that came out originally, that, you know, was an original topic of discussion when the remote learning first was initiated, was that I believe it had to be closed for three days or longer. I don't think the state will continue to adhere to that or give more flexibility. So, I'm comfortable saying that I don't have a final answer for that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Gall, no problem. I was just thanking, again, everybody for being here, as usually very common in the summertime in July and August. And obviously, these are unprecedented times. So, this community is obviously all hands on deck for the kids and for our neighbors. And it's just, it's really inspiring to see this many people involved in the process. So, if nobody has anything further to add to this meeting, any more questions? I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Randzan.
Just to go back quick, does Mrs. Fields, do you have anything else?
Oh, she's on mute, you're on mute.
No, I don't, no.
All right, we have a motion from Mrs. Randzan, can I get a second on the motion? Thank you, Mrs. Steel or Mrs. Stahl, Mrs. Recker, your choice there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys so much, stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.